So Jai Bhim, Namu Budhai to all. We begin today with our chanting. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. Namu tasbahagavato arahato samma sambuddhasa. So as we are studying the book three and very important parts of book three. Today we are going to study a very important section. And this pertains to the part, what is Dhamma? And we already seen. Few aspects of what is Dhamma, particularly we started with. The sub-part one to maintain purity of life is Dhamma last time and today we are going to look at. The sub-part two, to reach perfection in life is Dhamma. And this is a very short sort of a sub-part of this particular part. But it's the one page. It has got lot of ideas that are very useful to us and we can learn quite a lot from them and we need to. Analyze lot of concepts in this particular support. So let's begin with the. Content. Of the support. So as the title goes, Bhavas Ambidhar has tried to define what is Dhamma, what is a Dhamma and what is Sadhamma? And here in this section as we are dealing with what is Dhamma. Here Bhavas Ambidhar has tried to give another definition of Dhamma, what is Dhamma is to reach perfection in life. So to reach perfection, we have seen the path of perfection also and perfection is such a common word in. In Buddhism, it's sometimes called paramitas and we are going to look at the. Theme of paramitas in this section. We have already seen studied paramitas when we had done the book two of the Buddhanism where Bhavas Ambidhar has gone into the. Pali classification of paramitas, ten paramitas he has gone through and we have studied him. At length last, in last classes. Today the paramitas are going to be taking on a very different sort of a classification and very different flavor of the Dhamma. And therefore I think we have to, we have this very important section I will say to study today. So for example, to reach perfection in life, now what is the perfection in life? We are all. You know, flummoxed, we don't know what is the perfection in life. We have seen as Bhavas Ambidhar has put in the Buddhanism, the teachings of the Buddha about the purity of life and we have seen three qualities. And they are very beautifully explained by Bhavas Ambidhar in the, in the previous support, but this chapter I would say is. Also very unique in terms of understanding, the, understanding the. Heart of the Buddha's teachings. So let's begin, you know, so Bhavas Ambidhar says that there are three perfections, there are three kinds of perfections. And one kind of perfection is perfection in body, another is perfection in. In mind and other is perfection in speech, so we have seen that this three-fold classification of Kaya, Vacha, Mana. These three words are very important in Buddhism and we have to know them in, in their Pali context. And we have seen briefly last lecture as to how, you know, how we are all, nothing but the bodies, speech and mind. So here Bhavas Ambidhar really talks about perfection in body, he's, he's now defining what is the perfection in body. And this verse number four, I'm going to read it because very unique in a sense. By the destruction of Asavas, so the word here is Asavas or in today's language we can call them Asharavas. Realizing in this very life himself, so in this very life himself, what does one realize, moving it thoroughly. The heart's release, so here the word for mind used is heart. So you know, in Buddhism, this word for Mana, Riddaya and all this in. In Indian languages like Chitta, they cannot the same thing. But depending on the context, the Buddha use them to, you know, sometimes use, use Chitta as a technical word. Sometimes you know, he used word Mana, sometimes he used the word Radaya, Hadaya, whatever. So what I'm trying to, you know, get it here as to really understand very perfectly. What does Bhavasa mean by the purity perfection in mind? So what is the perfection in mind, knowing it thoroughly, the heart's release, the release by insight which is free from Asavas. So the heart is free from the Asavas, having attained it, abides therein. So you see, there are three things here, knowing, attaining and abiding. So in Buddhism, I think we have to understand these three words very perfectly, one word used by Bhavas Ambidhar is. Knowing it thoroughly, knowing. Attaining and abiding therein, so it's not enough to know something, it's, it's also necessary to attain it. And it's not just necessary to attain it, but one has to abide therein. This is called perfection in mind, so you know, let's, let's, let's. You know, analyze this, this sort of a thing, sort of, you know, very important words in this chapter. So Asavas, of course, there are, there is a confusion about the number of Asavas, traditionally it is called that there are three Asavas. Sometimes it is called, they are called four Asavas, so there is, you know, the confusion about the number of Asavas, but. We will, we are going to look at all the Asavas. So one Asava, what, what is the, what is the meaning of the word Asava? So, you know, you know, the Pali. Students, the word for Ash, this word Ashtava means. Sometimes it's like a poison, sometimes it's like something which, which flows with uncontrolled, you know, sometimes it's. It's, it's a poisonous that, poison that, 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 that tends everything that comes in contact with. Sometimes it is called the underlying conditionings, sometimes it is called the deep, deep sort of. Conditioners of our body, mind and speech, so Asharavas is a very important concept and. As we have seen that, you know, there are various ways to talk about Nirvana, one of the. Ways to talk about Nirvana or Nibbana is to talk in terms of the destruction of the Asavas and then we know that. Destractions of Raga, Dusa and Moho and there are a lot of ways by which. We can, we can, we can, we can look at the concept of Nibbana and that's what, there is the beauty of Bhavas Ambidhar's writings and speeches. And particularly his presentation on, on, on Buddhism is to, you know, make it. And make it very easy and also open several doors so that we can understand concepts. And then when, once we have done that, once we understood the concepts from its all angles. We begin to, you know, try to practice them in our life and once we start to practice them in our life, we try to attain them. And after attainment, we try to abide in those states, so. The Ashtavas or Asavas in Pali, they are three in number according to some texts, one is Kama, Kamasav. Means the, the depilement or influx. Of the sensual desires and we have seen that this, this theme of sensual desires coming often everywhere. In, in, in Buddhism and it's, 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 it's a desire, it's a neurotic desire. For sensuality, for sensual pleasures and here the word sensual canotes the experiences of our senses. And we know that traditionally in Buddhism, there are six senses, you know, the five physical senses and the mind. Because the mind is the, is sort of a possible in which all the data or the information brought from. All these five doors and they are made, made sense of and also we have seen last time the. You know, the language, how the language can affect us and the language is creation of nothing but our minds, so. Coming back to this word Kama and there are, we have seen last time Bhavas Ambidhar, as usual, very important word. That a person who wants to attain to a higher believes that there, there exists this word and there is the world beyond this. And I thought that we, we, today we can look at these two concepts. One concept is called Lukia and another is called Lukutara, so the Buddha's mind is Lukutara, doesn't mean that you know, it is. You know, it is, you know, it is, it is, it can be separated from this world because the word. Lucky and Lukutara, this word and word beyond, so this word, when we talk about this word, the Buddha has talked about this word in terms of. You know, Kama Vachar Chitta, so you know, this word that we experience through our senses. So that's the word created by our senses, the way we experience the world is mediated by our senses, by our five senses. And the conceptualization or the prapancha or the mental proliferation that goes on in our mind all the time. Because our mind has a, has a quality to proliferate into concepts, into abstract ideas, into ideologies. And you know, into, into, into views, into, into, into lot of things, you know, the mind is so potent, a device to create, to imagine. Lot of things that you know, we cannot see directly and, and I think that's very important for us to look at when we talk about the Kama Vachar Chitta. Or even, even Kama Chand or, or Kamasav or, or Kama, you know, Kama Tanna. As we have seen, three Tannas, this word has to be understood. Sometimes this word has a connotation of, 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 you know, sexual gratification or sexual feelings, but it is just one aspect of it. The very important aspect of is the desire to have sensual pleasures. And we of course know that the, the, the sense objects. You know, pull us out of ourselves, they, they can cause, they can, they can, they can, they can cause neurotic desires in us, they can cause ecological desires and so on and so forth. So this, this word, Loko, you know, Loko Vatar. Kama Loka and then there is another word which is called Rupa Loka, you know, if we, we, we. We have, we reach the sublimity of the mind as the Buddha has taught that we can, we can, we can attain to the sublimity of the mind. And you know, they are meditative states, generally they are called meditative states. And then there is, you know, there is Arupa Vachar Chitta, these three Chittas are called traditionally the Lukia Chitta. So this word, this word that we experience. And the word beyond that also we can experience once we attain to the state of, you know, this, this traditional list of, you know. Swatapan, Naagami, Sputagami and Aranth, we, we, we don't have to look into this list, but we. We look at it very simply, in a simplified ways so that we get the glimpse of the. What Bhavas Ambidhar has tried to bring in here. So of course we have to destroy the Kama Tanna and Kamasav. And the destruction of Kamasav is. Not that easy and sometimes you know, this, when we open the eyes, we cannot but see the world, when we, when we are ears. We cannot but hear the sounds around us, when we have tongue, we cannot but, but you know, test and when we have a mind, it cannot but think. So in these circumstances, there are a lot of ways in which Buddha has taught as to how we have to guard our senses. And how guarding the senses is so essential to perfect our Shilas and so on and so forth, so what you know, you see. What Bhavas Ambidhar is trying to get it at here when he's talking about the perfection in mind. And the destruction of Asava, particularly the Asavas of Asava, of calm, of, of sensuality. Okay, the second is, the second Asava is to, you know, the craving to be, you know. That we always try to be, you know, cherish our own self, cherish our own ego, cherish everything that supports that ego or ego. That, you know, that, that sense of self and this is also very potent, very powerful Tanna that we can all experience because you know. It has to do with what is called our, our, our self-image, our, our, our self and I think this, this Bhava, Bhavasa. Is also, you know, has to be understood in, in, in this proper way, this word Bhava is very important. And as we, we have seen, you know, recently I have been studying some books on how Buddha developed this language Pali and. The word Bhava of course comes in, in the, in terms of the three Tanna, Kama Tanna, Bhava Tanna and Yavata Tanna. You see, so Bhava, you know, there is also the, the craving to be. You know, the craving to, you know, sustain, craving to be, to live forever, you know, the craving to be, you know, the center of everything. So you see this Bhavasa also comes here in terms of one of the poisons, one of the underlying tendencies of our mind that we have always liked to be, you know. So then the third Asava is the Asava of Avijja, ignorance, because deep down us. You know, we are conditioned by the ignorance because we cannot see the way it is because whatever we see around us is always mediated by our senses. By our, 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 our feeling to be. And by the tendency, you know, you know, we, we don't see the way it is and because we don't see the way it is. We have this deep down poisoning in our mind and, and you know, that's why the Buddha says that one moment of truth, the one moment of Samadhi. Is so potentially powerful that it can, it can destroy a lot of conditioning, lot of, lot of, lot of. You know, the ignorance that we have in our minds from who knows what time. So you see this Asava of Avijja is also very, very interesting and then the fourth Asava that we all, we also see included. In the, in the list of Asavas is the Ditthasa, is the, is the, is the, is the underlying tendency to have views. You know, we all have views about something, we all have views about society, we have views about ourselves. We have views about, you know, how we should behave, we have this views, proliferation of views which goes on in our minds all the time. And I think this, this Ditthasa is also a very powerful underlying tendencies that we cannot but form judgments, form views. Of course judgment and views are important, you know, to reach to certain conclusions, but they has to be tentative, you know, they have, they cannot be sacrosanct. There is nothing, there is no scope for anything, anything fixed, anything static, anything that never changes in Buddhism. You know, as Bhavas Ambidhar says that he likes Buddhism because, because of the, that Buddhism is inherently flexible. You know, because everything is, is, you know, is interdependent, there is no concrete reality. They, you know, everything is marked by the mark of Shunya, you know, anything can become anything, that is what the Shunyavada says. Of course needs time, it of course, of course need lot of, you know, conditions and so on and so forth, so. You see the, 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 the way, the way we, we view the world, the way we have this tendency to view the few certain things. We, we, we are not perfect, we are imperfect because, because the reality of the world is dynamic, the reality of the world is. Is that is bound to change, it's not want to live as it is, so. This is the fourth, fourth Asava. Now let me read this verse once again so that we, we have some clarity about it. By the destruction of the Asavas and by Asavas we mean the underlying tendencies, the poisons, the way. Our minds are brought out, the way our, 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 you know, this. The way everything is colored by it and this is called Asa and we have seen the four ways, four classification of Asavas, Kama Sav. Where we have seen Bhava Sav and we have seen Avijja Sav and we have seen, seen Ditthasa Sav. You know, the karma is of course about sensuality, the bhava is of course our tendency to cherish ourselves so much. And of course Avijja means ignorance, lack of knowledge, lack of understanding, lack of prajna, lack of vijja. And then we have seen the fourth Asa that is Dithi, the views that we cherish, the kind of, that, that, the kind of point of views that we take. So, so this is the destruction of the Asavas realizing in this very life itself and you see. You see the, this realization, we have to aim to attain in this very life. It's not some other life that we are going to realize this, we have to try to attain it in this very life, knowing it thoroughly and you know, we have to know it fully and totally. The hearts release, you know, the word uses heart means Mana, Adaya, so you know, hearts release, the release by insight, there are two types of release in Buddhism. One is released by prajna and another, another is released by shraddha. So both type of beliefs, you know, religions are possible here, hearts release, the release by insight which is free from the Asavas. Now this release of heart is free from Asavas, the, the heart, the mind has become perfect. Having attained it, abide therein, this is called the perfection in mind. Now you see this last word is hanging here, the last sentence, if you read it, these are the three bodily perfections now. I think there is some editorial sort of lapse here and Bhavas Ambidhar has not specified what are the, how we perfect our body. But we can know how we can perfect our body by looking at the previous sections. You know, like by, by, by right action, we can perfect our body by right speech and right, you know, Ajivika, Samajivika. Bhavas Ambidhar has, has talked it, talked about these three things in the previous section also when he talked about the purity. Of, 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 of body, speech and mind and here I think we can, we can, we can take it further. Where we are talking about the bodily perfections in terms of, you know, how not to, you know, harm other people, Adinadana, Veeramani and. You know, if we want to take the framework of five precepts, you know, not taking what is not given to us and not indulging too much into the sensuality. So this is the of course bodily perfections and we know the perfections of speech. We have seen the four ways, the, the, the four quality ways of speech, we have seen lying, we have seen slander, we have seen. The foolish babble and we have seen divisive speech, you just turn it into positive thing and you get the path of perfection of speech. So our speech should be, there are various sutras where Buddha says that our speech should be true, it should be timely, it should not be divisive. It should bring harmony in the community and so on and so forth, so of course it's not difficult to know the perfections of in, in body and in speech. But I think the, the way Bhavas Ambidhar has sketched a thumbnail of perfection in mind. In terms of the destruction in Asavas, I think is one of the ways Bhavas Ambidhar has, has, has tried to. Understand and of course we have seen, when we are, we have seen the purification of mind, Bhavas Ambidhar has used the, used the teachings of neuron. As to how the, how the destruction of the, of the, of the, of the five neuron can lead to the purity of mind, so you see it's all ties together. And I think there is a beauty of the Buddhism, that if you, if you read it carefully, if we, we analyze lot of things, everything falls in place. You know, everything is interrelated with each other and we can, we can, we can begin to see the way Bhavas Ambidhar has worked. To write this wonderful, wonderful book for us. So coming back to the fifth verse, there are other perfections, there are other perfections, the Buddha explained them to Subuti. So I'm going to take some time to explain the context of this because you know, this looks to be one page, but this is very important, I think. For all of us to dwell deeply into this section, so this figure of Subuti is very prominent in, in the Prajna Paramita literature particularly in. In, in, in one very famous sutra and it's called Diamond Sutra. And Vajra Shridika, it's called Vajra Shridika and the theme of Vajra is very dominant in Buddhism. It is, you know, the Buddha's wisdom is powerful that it can destroy even the most, most hard thing in the world, the Vajra. Is considered, the diamond is considered to be very difficult to destroy. But the Buddha's, Buddha's wisdom is more difficult, more harder, you know, it can even smash the diamond into pieces, that kind of a wisdom. Vajra Shridika Sutta. And it is called Prajna Paramita Vajra Shridika Sutra, there, there is a lot of, there is, there is, there is a lot of writings on, on Prajna Paramita Sutta. But the most famous of all these sutras is what is called the Diamond Sutra and it's a wonderful sutra, it's a beautiful sutra that we can. Whenever we get time, we can read into it, but here Bhavas Ambidhar has offered us the gist of the Prajna Paramita Literature, the Prajna Paramita Sutra. And there is Astha Sahastri, Sahastrika, Prajna Paramita, there is Prajna Paramita in one word. The word is Erb, which is the denial of everything and so on and so forth. So the heart of the Diamond Sutra is captured here in this particular chapter by Bhavas Ambidhar. So when I say, when I say the heart of the Prajna Paramita Sutra, that means you can understand how, how important this section might be here. And how important that, that, that teaching might be for all of us. You know, this, 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 you will not see in the Pali text. But you can, you can, you can of course see the paramitas in the Pali, Pali text, you can see all the teachings in the Pali text. But the way it is conceptualized, the ones, the way it is elaborated in this particular so-called Mahayana text is very easy to. Easy for each of us to understand and therefore I think lies the importance. Of this wonderful teaching that Bhavas Ambidhar has mentioned here. So let me read it one by one so that we get a clarity. The Buddha explained them to Subuti, now Subuti has asked lot of questions in Prajna Paramita in, in the Diamond Sutra to the Buddha and Buddha has answered. So Buddha is like, you know, the, the teaching in terms of the question and answer format all the time. You put a question to the Buddha, the Buddha will answer back and then another questions will arise and the Buddha will answer them and so on and so forth, it will go on and on. So here likewise Subuti is asking a few questions that you can read in the, in the, in the, in the traditional Diamond Sutra, but here. Is a section of it and I think this is the most powerful section of it. So Subuti asks, what is Bodhisattva's perfection of giving, what is Dana Paramita? So he is simply asking the Buddha, what is Dana Paramita? And the answer that the Buddha gives is, I think, the heart of the, of his teachings. And, and, and every single word counts here, I'm, when I read it, every single word counts here, so what's number seven, the Buddha says, the Lord says. Here a Bodhisattva, Bodhisattva, his thoughts associated with the knowledge of all moods, now you see, if we understand this word. His thoughts associated with the knowledge of all moods, that means the Buddha knows everything. The Buddha knows all the tendencies of the human being, the Buddha knows all the Chittas, the Buddha knows all the minds, Buddha knows all the tendencies of mind. And we can interpret the way we like it, but the, the, the point is that the Buddha is full of wisdom, the Buddha is full of. Understanding, the Bodhisattva is full of wisdom, the Bodhisattva is full of understanding and therefore this, 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 this sentence is very important. His thoughts associated with the knowledge of all moods gives gifts, gives Dana, the word is Dana, okay, gives Dana. What are the, what is the, what are the gifts? What are the objects? Inward or outward things, so he gives what is inside him and he gives what lies outside him. Oh, and having made them common to all beings, you know, see. Whatever the Bodhisattva gives, he makes them common to every being without discrimination. Without, you know, making the distinction between this and that, without his community and not his community, without, you know, any distinction whatsoever. There is no distinction, having made them common to all beings. So whatever the Buddha gives, he makes them common, well Bodhisattva gives, he makes them common to all beings, he dedicate them to supreme enlightenment. So whatever the Bodhisattva gives, the Bodhisattva gives with an aim of attaining supreme enlightenment. So you see the, the, we, we always talk about the Dana Paramita giving and there are a lot of ways by which we can give. We can give the material objects to other people, we can give material comforts to other people, we can give them knowledge, we can give them. You know, the, 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 what is called confidence, Abhayadana and we have seen this Dana Mudra of, of the Buddha, you know, many times and. Abhay Mudra, this is called Abhay Mudra and there is of course the mudra of giving like this, what are the mudra? So you see the Buddha, this, this, this hand of the Buddha is open, the fist is never closed. You know, it's, it's always open, it's always giving, it's always, you know, looking out in the world. So you see when, when there are lot of classification of, of, of Dana. And one of them is the Dana of Dhammadaan and it said that in all the Danas, Sabbadhanan, Dhammadaan, Janati and. And, 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 and this Dana is very important, of course Buddhism begins with Dana, Dana, Shila and Bhavana, traditionally if you look at the. In the, in the Pali, Pali way of looking at the things, the three pillars of Buddhism are Dana. Dana, Shila and Bhavana, Bhavana means to cultivate the mind, Shila is to, you know, practice the Shila and. Dana, of course we know, so Dana, Buddhism starts with Dana giving because there is nothing to cherish forever, you know, we ultimately have to give. You know, even our bodies will be given one day, you know, your, or every, that everything belongs to us is going to belong to somebody someday. Isn't it, nothing we can, we can take with us, isn't it, so once we have to, we, when we, when we have to ready for this Mahadan or Dana of, you know, when we, when we die. You know, if you don't practice giving right now, if you don't, don't, don't lose hold over the things right now, how are we going to feel when, when, when that ultimate. How are we going to feel when 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 that ultimate reality of the death strikes us? So the 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 giving as a practice is so important in Buddhism, you know, so important, Dana is so important, but. With what, you know, there is also imperfect Dana, there is a perfect Dana, there is an imperfect Dana also. So whenever we 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 give. We don't expect to return anything, they're getting return anything, we just give and we give. And dedicate it to the attainment of supreme enlightenment. And supreme enlightenment is nothing but the perfections of perfection of giving, it it all comes back, so. Let's read it again, okay, this was number seven, the Lord, here a Bodhisattva. His thoughts associated with the knowledge of all modes gives gifts that is inward. Or outward things and having made them common to all beings, whatever belongs to him, he makes them common to all beings. He dedicate them to supreme enlightenment and and this is very interesting and what happens? Also others, he instigate there too. You see the Buddhism is often spoken as a path of 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 self purification or self perfection and so on and so forth. But this section of Diamond Sutra makes it clear for us that it's not just about ourselves. The Buddhism is not just about ourselves, you know, how we can make everything common to all beings, the great compassion, Mahakaruna. The Diamond Sutra most of the times is considered to be the Sutra of Wisdom, but we see this, this Mahakaruna of the Buddha. Is is everywhere, we cannot have Buddhism without this Karuna, the Mahakaruna. The Buddha is called the great being, the great compassionate being, Mahakarunik. You know, we have, when when we were, uh when I was child, there were speeches around in the localities, people used to address Buddha as Mahakarunik. And you see this this word, Mahakarunik has certain ring to it. And if we can capture even that bit of the Buddha's compassion, we we are already on our path ahead. Path to supreme enlightenment and this is what the the they were beautifully brought up here by Bhavasambhikar that it's not just about us. We also have to inspire others to give. You know, to sacrifice, to 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 to, you know, give confidence to the world. Now, I think this is the highest point here. The last line is the highest point of this and here the Buddha goes like this. But there is nowhere an apprehension of anything. The Buddha gives everything, the Buddha, you know, inspires the entire world to give, the Buddha makes everything common to everybody. But. There is no. Apprehension of anything, he doesn't dwell anywhere, the Buddha is not attached to anything. The Buddha is not attached to giving, he gives, he gives, he gives, but he has not a single thought arises in his mind that he has given, not a single. Thought arises in his mind that he has inspired others. So that's the mind which is completely free. That is, that is the mind which is completely free from all the Asavas, all the clingings. All the narrow mindedness, all the wrong use, that mind is free, we cannot even. The get a glimpse of it, that mind has gone beyond this world. As Bhavasambhikar said, this world and the world beyond it, it has become Lokutta. This is the high point of the Diamond Sutra, this is the high point of the Buddha's teaching that. Even everything is given, even the life is given, not a single thought arises that I have given or dedicated my life to this. And I think that's very profound, that the mind of the Buddha dwells nowhere, the mind of the Bodhisattva dwells nowhere, it's not attached to anything. That doesn't mean that the that 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 life is now they doing nothing, you know. Buddhism is all about doing, it's all about working. But it's not about cherishing that that thought that I have done this, I have said this, I have given this, I have, I have, you know. This sense, this 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 thought process doesn't arise in that mind. And I think this is, this is like, you know, taking to a very high point and I'm going to re- read read it again. So that lot of these beautiful ideas will be reinforced in our minds. So, there are other perfections, the Buddha explained them to Subuti. What is a Bodhisattva's perfection of giving? The Buddha says, the Lord says, here a Bodhisattva, his thoughts associated with the knowledge of all modes, all knowing. The Buddha knows all modes of thinking, all modes of being, of the humanity, okay? Gives Dana, gives gift, what kind of gifts, inward and outward. So he gives what is best in him to others, he gives what he has acquired to the others. And he makes them common to all, all beings. And he dedicates them to supreme enlightenment and also others instigates there too. He also inspires others to do likewise the way he has done and while. This is happening, the mind of the Bodhisattva or the high, the 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 Chitta of the Bodhisattva doesn't hold on to anything. There is no concept that the Buddha, Bodhisattva holds on to, the concept of Dana. So these paragraphs teaches us that Buddhism is all about doing. You know, it's of course know about knowing because without knowing we cannot do. But you know, the the Dana is an action in the world, we have to act in the world. Isn't it, but we have to act in the world in such a way that there is no thought that I have acted in the in this way. And that's, that's the beauty of it, that's the sort of a high pointer, so we have seen the Dana and the giving, that's called the Dana Paramita. And as I told you, we are going to deal with six paramitas here. So second is the Sheila Paramita. What is a Bodhisattva's perfection of morality, Shil Paramita, what is Shil Paramita? The Buddha says, he himself lives under the obligation of the ten ways of wholesome acting and also others instigate there too. So. We know the, we have seen the ten ways of wholesome actions, previously we can see them in the future, they come all the time in the Buddha Dhamma. But the second part is also very important, also others instigates there too and also there is nowhere an apprehension of anything. So sometimes we make, we make prison out of shield, we 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 try to pose ourselves that, you know. I am that, I practice this, I am a perfect, the other others are not okay, I am okay. Because I practice this, I am a Buddhist, whatnot. Here, the Sheila has to be practiced on their own, in their own terms, without, 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 without expecting that, you know. One is going to get something out of it without glorifying ourselves, without, 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 without putting that mask on ourselves. So you see this uh perfection of morality, we can look at morality in many different ways. But here, you know, for the discussion today, we are going to move on. Then what is a Bodhisattva's perfection of patience, it's called Shanti Paramita, Kanti Paramita in Pali and we have seen. Kanti Paramita in the in the in the previous discussions that we had. What is good the Bodhisattva's perfection of patience, he himself becomes one who has acute patience. And others also he instigates patience, so we have seen very many, very many examples of patience that. You know, the ability to do the continued, continuous efforts, sustainable efforts is patience. Patience is not just being quiet, the patience is is also about doing something without, you know, losing hope. Conscientcy, you know, uh something, you know, done in a, in a, in a longer time in a sustainable way. And I think that's very important definitions, you see. In in all this definitions or sections or teachings that Bhavasambhikar has included here, they form a very. Complete whole, when we, when we completely study the Buddha Dhamma, we begin to see that we can enter into, into, enter from any door without becoming dogmatic. Without becoming, you know, fundamentalist, and that is the beauty of the writings of Bhavasambhikar, you know. So, what is. A Bodhisattva's professional vigor, Virya, Virya Paramita, he dwells persistently in the five perfections. And also others he instigate to do likewise, now see. Virya is about practicing all the rest of the five perfections. It's so beautifully given here, that we need energy, we need that vigor to practice Dana. To practice Sheila, to practice Kanti, to practice, you know, Samadi, to practice Pradnya. We we need, we need vigor, so Buddhism is is the religion of energy, the Buddhism is the path of vigor. The Buddhism is a park of, path of energy, if you if you remove the energy part of it, the Buddhism collapses. The Buddhism doesn't simply can, cannot simply stand, you know, it it it's, it's like, you know, you, it's like. Uh we we can say Buddhism is a a path of 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 energy, path of vigor, what Bhavasambhikar says, persistence. And he dwells persistently in the five perfections and also others, so to to practice five perfections. We cannot just practice it without making an effort. So Buddhism is a religion of efforts, we have to make efforts all the time, efforts to give, efforts to practice Sheila, efforts to. Efforts to practice, you know, uh Shanti, efforts to practice Samadi, efforts to practice Pradnya. A one line, but very important for us to understand. But it's not enough to energize just ourselves, but we have to also energize other people. And what? But there is nowhere an apprehension of anything, this is very key. The mind dwells nowhere, there is nowhere an apprehension of anything. Then the verse number fourteen. What is the Bodhisattva's perfection of concentration, meditation, Samadi? He himself through skill in means, skill in means is a technical word, it's called Upay Kausalaya. Enters into into the trances, the Dhyanic stages, like I told you about the Arupachitta, Rupachitta, Arupachitta. As he is not reborn in the corresponding heavens of form. As he would. Others also instigate to do likewise, you see this is very, very profound. When we practice Dana or when we practice Samadi, we attend to lot of Dhyanic stages. And sometimes those Dhyanic stages are so alluring, you know, that we can, we can, we can, we can become enslaved, we can become prison to those. Those, those, those mental states. But here Samadi is like, you know, not falling into that trap, rising up, 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 going up, where? Where do we go? You know? Where there is nowhere an apprehension of anything. And that's made clear by the sixth perfection. What is a Bodhisattva's perfection of wisdom, Pradnya Paramita, what is Pradnya Paramita? He does not settle down in any dharma. He does not settle down in any dharma, he contemplates the essential origin nature of all dharmas. And others also he instigates to contemplation of all dharmas. See, you you see this six paramitas that has been taught here. Taken from the Diamond Sutra and brought here by Bhavasambhikar in this, in this chapter, very beautifully expounds. The complete teachings of the Buddha, very beautifully expound the complete teachings of the Buddha. We have to, as I told you, dwell on every single word, find out the connection. Try to understand everything very clearly with energy. So these six paramitas, the paramita of Dana, Dana Paramita, Sheila Paramita, Kanti Paramita, Virya Paramita. Samadi Paramita and the Pradnya Paramita, these five paramitas are the path of perfections. We have to perfect ourselves this way. And and we have seen how this, 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 this one paramita and you know is linked with other paramita. And how they all end up with the highest sort of a paramita called Pradnya Paramita, where. The Bodhisattva does not settle down in any dharma, any dharma, whatever, you know, the Lokya Dharma or Lokutta Dharma. Nibban or Sansara doesn't dwell anywhere. It can, he contemplates the essential origin nature of all the ma- dharmas, essential nature of everything. What is the essential nature of everything he contemplates? But it's not enough for him to do himself for himself, he also instigates to the others to do likewise. And Bhavasambhikar conclude this particular uh chapter. With the reverse of the title, so the title goes like this, to reach perfection in life is Dhamma. And the verse number eighteen of this chapter says, it is Dhamma to cultivate these perfections. So if we have to, you know, uh what is the Dhamma, if somebody asks us what is the Dhamma, to cultivate perfections. And what are the perfections, we have seen the perfections, perfection in my mind, perfection in body, perfection in speech. And then we have seen six paramitas as Bhavasambhikar has put in this section of the Buddha Dhamma and I think. This is a wonderful, small bullet, I would say, you know, small capsule that we can take any, you know, anywhere with us. Whenever we want, we can read it, we can understand it, we can contemplate on it and we can understand it. So that we practice the Dhamma this way. So I stop here for and open up for the, uh you know, discussions. Any comments, any feelings, anything that is in, that is on your mind?
Sir, sir, with uh 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 this, Asavasi is the, the word, this, this whole chapter has been devoted on this word only. And somewhere I have read that it's 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 just an obstructions to enlightenment.
Very, very good translation, yes.
It's it's just an obstructions to enlightenment and and freedom from the Asavas contributes Arantship. That that I want, that you should uh uh miss explore these words that I am not dusting it. That that freedom from thus uh Asavas contributes Arantship and obstructions of enlightenment is Asavas, sir.
It's a one and the same thing of, you know, saying, one is a positive way of saying. Another way, one is a negative way of saying, so it's of course, you know, when you remove these obstructions, you attend to Nirvana, you you attend to Arantship. You you become a Bodhisattva. You see?
Right, sir, right, sir.
Yeah, it's very, very, you know, this is the beauty of language.
Yeah.
And the Buddha has told us not to, you know, attach to the language, use it, understand it. To so that you can practice, so that you can tell others.
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Obstacles are factors, yes.
Yes, deep down, deep underlying tendencies that we all have. So you know, you understand superficial surgery, we is not enough, we have to do the deeper surgery of our minds. We have to remove these subtle and you know, the deeper sort of, you know, obstructions to our enlightenments.
Sir, I just wanted to know, like, what are the different ways to remove this Asavas? Because as you said, these are uncontrollable, like, continuous uh. Uh in the mind, so what are the different ways to remove this?
There can be many ways, Samiksha ji, one of the ways is of course the noblest path. You know, the the prac- the practice of perfections, paramitas, so these are all these these teachings will enable us to remove all these obstructions. The path of Shil Samadhyan Pradnya, the path of, you know, the Sevan Bhojan, all all these teachings are immediately to the destruction of the. Asavas. So there is no, no, no single pill that you take it and all these distractions or these obstructions are removed, there is a path to that and we have to practice.
In in other words, we can.
Meditation is uh not the uh ultimate path, sir, right? Because as we know in meditation, it is a training to the mind and Asavas all relate to the basically mind tendencies. So meditation is not the ultimate, ultimate way we can serve it.
Nothing is ultimate path, you know, everything is a a means towards that end, to attain that mind, that that stage of mind. Because when we talk about the meditation, we talk about lot of Dhyanic stage, stages, if we will look, read the historical biography of the Buddha. We know that, you know, Buddha has, before his enlightenment, has gone through all these stages of meditation and he found it not very useful. And then ultimately settled down to the investigation of his own mind. So if you are calling the investigation of your own mind, meditation is good, you know, that's good enough. And also meditation in terms of Bhavana, as I told you, Dana, Sheila, Bhavana, these three are the very important things. Bhavana means cultivation, cultivating the mind, you know, in this, this, this six paramitas practices can also be called the Bhavana. Because here we are cultivating the Dana, you know, we are cultivating the Sheila, they all can be included into so called meditation. And of course they are included in the so called meditation, there is Dana Nusati, there is Sila Nusati, there is of course the all different kinds of Sapiis. So let's not stick to, you know, the word meditation so much. And because you know that has ultimately a danger of, you know, making something into rigid meditation in Buddhism. He's a, he's a, he's, 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 you know, spoken in terms of Bhavana, there are many ways of cultivating mind, many, many, many ways of cultivating mind. And the Buddha has taught lot of different ways to cultivate. And the Buddha has taught lot of different ways to cultivate. Any, anything else?
Sir, it's in other way, uh we can, we can
Umeen Bhai, you are not clear. Hello? Am I audible?
Jai Bhim sir.
Jai Bhim Shashank.
Yes, so today's beautiful chapter to reach perfection in life is Dhamma. So, the beautiful point you said about uh uh the, there is nowhere an apprehension of anything. There is no way of dwelling on anything and when we practice Dana Paramita. Uh so Dana Paramita cannot have the conditionality that I have given this, I have given that. I am famous in giving or I am, I have my name in that, I have label myself in that. So there is no conditionality uh in Dana Paramita, we we cannot dwell in that that to, in order to achieve the supreme enlightenment, I have to be unconditional, I have to be like, you know, uh I don't, I cannot expect anything in return. That you know, people will appreciate me, people will praise me, people will, you know, you know, uh give me some, I can say sort of uh famous personality. But in order to gain the enlightenment, I think I cannot dwell myself anywhere. Uh in any, any kind of, I can, I cannot put myself label that, you know, I am following of, I am a follower of Dhamma, I am follower of practicing uh this Sheila Samadhi Pradnya. It is all about the way Baba Sahib said, there is nowhere an apprehension, we cannot dwell anything, we have to like, you know, reach perfection. Perfection in all way, body, speech and mind and to reach our mind to an un- unconditional way to reach the supreme enlightenment, that is where the Baba Sahib is trying to, you know, uh emphasis on and trying to cultivate that, you know, it is a Dhamma to cultivate all the perfection in mind. So that is a beautiful point, I really like that, Mangesar today.
Good, in 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 Buddhism we say that there are only deeds no doer, there is a deed but no doer.
Yeah.
And there is beautifully said by Buddha many times that, you know, there is an action but no actor. There is a process but no substance. And that's what the Patichisamutpa is all about.
Absolutely.
Anything else? We have six minutes to go before we finish our class for today. If not, then you know, I will take another one or two minutes to just briefly elaborate some points that, Shashank, you want to say something?
Uh, yes, sir, regarding this perfection, while we like, you know, cultivating this perfection and and one beautiful point Baba Sahib said that we have to like, you know, inspire others uh in terms of reaching their perfection, in terms of giving them fearlessness, giving them the confidence, giving them the energy, giving them the joy, the way we are getting the joy individually, but also in socially, we have to like, you know, past that joy, past that fearlessness, past that confidence, uh it's all about, you know, cultivating uh in together. And that is the quality of the Bodhisattva, uh and the Baba Sahib is a Bodhisattva. So definitely we can see the quality of Bodhisattva in Baba Sahib himself. So that is one point I want to say that, thank you.
You see this, uh the way Baba Sambeetkar approaches the Buddha's teaching is not from a a narrow point of view or as a from conceptual point of view, you know, he tries to inspire us to practice Buddha's Dhamma and he has said, I think a few times that the practicing the Buddha's Dhamma is not easy, it's very difficult. And you know, it's it's not something that you have to believe into something, it's not a belief system. It's not something, something that, you know, somebody will come, power being will come and help us and will take us to the other store, it's not like that, we have to make our own efforts, we have to make our own sort of, uh you know, uh commitment, we have to make our own lives, you know, tending towards the 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 supreme enlightenment that 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 the Bodhisattva aspires. And in the way, uh the whole object of this Buddha and this Dhamma is to get that clarity for us. You know, because otherwise what happens, we 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 try to bring in so many things from so many directions, make a hodgepodge of the things and we get lost in the conceptual jungle. And therefore, I think, like for example, the concept of meditation which people often talk about and there are a lot of ways in which people meditate, there are several forms of meditation. And of course, you know, we are not against any form of meditation, you know, there are techniques, you know, people need techniques to practice certain things and there is of course a technique to 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 make your minds very you know, calm, quiet, but it's not that they will often work. And sometimes they don't work. So what to do in this, in this, in this, in this situation, we have to get a complete holistic view of the Dhamma. You know, the Dana is important, you know, when we start giving without restraining ourselves. When we, when we, when we start to start us, you know, start perfecting our behavior, when we start to cultivate that energy for the Dhamma. You know, to practice the Dhamma, that energy can 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 shine in any form. You know, it can, it can, it can, it can shine in terms of, you know, setting up your local vihar or, you know, mobilizing the people around you, that's also Buddhism for the Buddha Dhamma. You know, nobody, nobody cause that act of Dhamma, you see? Like there are so many people in the community who do, who do so much of a good work. But sometimes they might be opposed to so called, you know, one of the techniques of meditation and people say, oh, they are not Buddhists, no. You see what I'm trying to get it at? A little efforts, you know, to celebrate on the Buddha journey, to to inspire people towards the Buddha. You know, is 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 the Dhamma, is that path of perfection. So you know, there is nothing in our lives that cannot be touched by the Dhamma, once we have this aspiration to attain to supreme enlightenment. And the test is that whatever we do, whatever, the way we act, we don't cling to it, we don't even cling to the goodness. We don't forget badness, we even don't need to cling to the goodness. Isn't it? So that is the mind of the Buddha, so we cannot fathom the mind of the Buddha, we cannot get a, you know, understand the mind of the Buddha, the way, because it's vast, it's not dwelling anywhere and it's everywhere. You see, so, I think, when we, when we, when we read uh the Buddha Nisama, this activity is very important. As to how we can bring that alive in our lives, how we can bring that alive in our communal life, how we can bring that alive in our national lives, so on and so forth. Very interesting and very important for us, when we talk about the Dhamma, we have to have a very clear definition of the Dhamma. Because people define Dhamma in different ways, but the way Baba Sambeetkar has defined it, it's very practical. You know, purification of mind, purification of life, to purify life. Now what is purification of life? One, two, three, four, as clear as that. You know, reach perfection in life, what is it? Three perfections. Body perfection, you know, speech, mind, that's it, another form of perfection, practice Paravitas. So on and so forth. Then the three parts that Baba Sambeetkar has talked in the beginning of the Buddha Nisama, when the Buddha gives the teachings to the five parirajah, that's also beautiful. So what I'm trying to get it as is, you know, this continuous study of the Buddha Nisama with this attitude of understanding for, you know, practicing in the world, in the community is so important for us. You know, without, without saying that this is good, that is good, because people do this, they are good Buddhists, because people don't do this, they are bad Buddhists, no. We have to take a very comprehensive attitude. Very comprehensive attitude that we all need to take. So is that okay with today? Should we end our discussion today? So unless there is anybody, anything on anybody's mind, we will end our class here and see you next week. Alka madam?
Buddha has uh said that each paramita should be associated with Pradnya.
Yes, yes.
While giving Dan, then practicing Sheila. Then Opikshaneishkamavirya, Shanti Satyadhisthan, each paramita should be associated with Pradnya.
I think that's very clear in the verse number seventeen, because the verse number seventeen is coming in all the six paramitas. He does not settle down in any Dharma, he contemplates the essential original nature of all dharmas and others also he instigates to the contemplation of all dharmas.
Yes.
Thank you, Alka Thaai, thank you all, Jai Bhim Nobhuddhae.